We're going to call this meeting to order, the in-depth February 9th meeting of the Muscatine City Council. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We're going to move right along with our agenda. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the proposed urban renewal plan amendment to the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. This is the time for the public to comment.
Your honor, should we have a roll call first?
Oh, yeah, Fran. You forgot. Will you do the roll call, please, Fran?
We'll get there.
Councilmembers Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
Sosado.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
All present, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. So, we have a public hearing on the proposed urban renewal plan amendment to the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. Now is the time for the public to comment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share tonight? Hearing nothing? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with all ayes. We're going to move to a resolution approving the urban renewal plan amendment for the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Phil?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing nothing? Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Sosado?
Aye.
Nat Fig?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Ray Walt?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Number four on tonight's agenda is another public hearing on the proposed development agreement with HNI Corporation. Now is the time for the public to comment. Hearing nothing? Do I have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with all ayes. Now, the resolution approving the development agreement with HNI Corporation, authorizing the annual appropriation tax increment payments, and pledging certain tax increment revenues to payment of the agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing nothing? Councilman Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nat Fig?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Sosado?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next, we're going to have an update on the Muscatine County sanitary landfill consent order and the project status with consolidation fee by Tim Builo of Barker Lamar Engineering. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to present to you this evening. Now, this will be an informal presentation, so if you have questions at any time, please just feel free to ask. Real quickly, what we're going to go over, I'm going to give a little background on the consent order, just to refresh everyone's memory, and then give a summary and status of where we're at. And then, what we found in 2016, this is the second year of actions under the consent order. What's coming up in 2017, and then, we'll divert off of the master, off of the consent order and briefly talk about the master plan, and then, a little bit about the collaboration project with Scott County. Okay, background. Muscatine entered a consent order with the DNR in February of 2015. The requirements were almost exclusively associated with groundwater. And the culmination of the consent order is in you selecting a remedy to address groundwater impact at the landfill. This is a chart of the consent order activities. The green boxes are the ones that are completed, so you can see that everything in 2015 and 2016 has been completed. And what we have left is some groundwater plume delineation, a reporting on the 2016 findings, and then, an assessment of corrective measures. After that, everything is kind of in response to DNR reviews of submittals. This is a map of the landfill, just real quickly. Areas of groundwater impact right up here, on, I should say first, that north is to your left on the figure. So, the top is the east side of the landfill. Up in the east central portion, there's some groundwater impact, a little bit on the south side. Not showing up too well. Okay. Some there, and then, on the south side, and then, you've got, on the southwest side, some additional groundwater impact. So, what did we do in 2016? Earlier, there were two wells, your two most contaminated wells, were on the east side, and they previously had been installed too close to the waste boundary. So, obviously, if your well's very close to the waste, it's more likely to have contamination and higher levels of contamination. Your wells are allowed to be 50 feet away from the waste boundary, so that was the first step we took, was installed those wells at 50 feet, and then, began a year-long sampling program of those wells. The result was positive. The contaminant concentrations were significantly less than what were in the compliance wells that you had that were too close to the waste, but there was still impact in those wells, so some bracketing was required. So, that was the other thing that was done. We installed seven bracketing wells to attempt to define the edges of the plumes around the landfill. The metals concentrations are mostly bracketed, just a quick caveat on that. You have to bracket to the background concentration. So, metals are naturally present in the soil and the groundwater. So, determining exactly what background is can be a little bit tricky. And based on a change in, required change in the sampling process that resulted in lower levels of sediment in your, in your samples, the DNR is requiring that the background be updated. So, what's going to happen here, and this is due by the end of June, is the old background levels that we were bracketing to, which were up here, are going to be dropped down to significantly lower, which will mean what we think is bracketed now probably won't be bracketed. There's some things that we may be able to do associated with gathering more background data, so installing a different background well and sampling that for a year, that may necessitate an extension to the consent order conclusion. But that would be in your best interest if we were able to do that. You could get more background data, maybe find some higher levels of metals naturally occurring, which would make it that you wouldn't have to bracket as much, or maybe not have to bracket, as far as the metals are concerned. Organic contaminants are much easier. They shouldn't be in the ground naturally. So, basically, you bracket until you don't find it. So, that's a pretty clear cut. You have an organic plume on the southwest side of the landfill. One of the things we were trying to find out there was whether or not it was migrating in the shallow groundwater or much deeper. That was, we needed to know how it was getting to where it was. The finding was that it's not migrating shallow, so it's deep, and that's where we're going to have to bracket then. We also continued with our source characterization. We need to know if the contamination is from leachate or landfill gas. It continues to be from leachate, basically, on the east side. And on the southwest side, the small amount of impact on the south side of the landfill appears to be landfill gas. And we do have good indications that Mother Nature is addressing the contamination to some degree. So, that's what we wanted to have. We'll enlist Mother Nature to the fullest extent possible to keep, because you don't pay her to do a cleanup, so she works for free. And we'll try to use her as much as possible. And then, what you'll probably have to do is assist her by doing some form of source control. So, if leachate is migrating out of the landfill at a rate that's faster than Mother Nature can address it, we need to slow down that leachate migration from the landfill. So, that would be some kind of source control, either a trench on this edge of the landfill that we're pulling leachate out of, or if that's too deep, drilling some extraction wells and pumping the leachate out. So, that's probably what you're looking for, but things are heading in the direction that we had hoped, which would be your more cost-effective solution.
When would we know that?
When would you know that that's the?
When would we know that those are the steps that you're going to take? You said that potentially pumping it out to leachate, or making a way of getting it out of the trench. When would we know that?
That would be?
In 317 or in 12117?
It would have to be currently, it would have to be by 12117. That will all be figured out and explained in the assessment of corrective measures report. Now, one of the things that needs to be done before you complete an assessment of corrective measures report is all the plumes have to be defined. So, if it, if we need to get an extension on defining the plumes, because we don't have a good background dataset, and really, the window that's opened with regard to that is you have two background wells, both located on the north side of the landfill. One of those wells has some strange data in it, and so, the DNR is saying, by the end of this month, they want to plan to figure out what you're going to do with that background well, which may include replacing it. So, that may be what we do, is replace that well. Okay, when you replace a well, or get a new background well, then, you have to collect five samples over the next 12 months. Then, you can start evaluating what background is. So, that, right now, we don't really know, or we could, we could say, we don't know what the target is for defining the plume. So, if we go the route of installing another background well or two, then, we'll, we'll engage in a year-long sampling program, then, an evaluation of what background concentrations are, then, go and define the plume to those new levels. And see, the hope would be that by putting in the new background wells, that possibly, there might be some higher levels of various metals naturally occurring that would allow us to have an easier time bracketing. Your background well is a half a mile away from some of the areas you're trying to define. So, the groundwater could be quite different a half mile away, and worse, trying to say that it has to be the same. So, that could be the benefit of getting more background data. The other thing that could, could benefit is, the main issue you have is cobalt. That's a problem across the state, not because it's a, I don't think because it's a big contamination problem. I think it just shows up based on the cleanup level that's required, that I would say over, in the state of Iowa, over half of the drivers of cleanup are cobalt. At your site, it happens to be 60%. Of all of the things that are making you have to go to corrective action, 60% of them are cobalt. Just doesn't seem realistic to me that cobalt is that big, that's the biggest issue we have associated with landfills. So, that's being brought up to the DNR by multiple entities, and it will be looked at over the next year as to whether or not we really need to be this particular, or this concerned about cobalt, and see what, where that potentially goes, and that may, as this process then matures, what you're required to do may change.
It's not heavy metal, is it?
It's not one of your typical eight heavy metals that EPA usually looks for. It does not have a maximum contaminant level. EPA sets maximum, maximum contaminant levels for drinking water. Cobalt's not one of them.
And do you know how fast the plume is moving?
Your plume is not, I wouldn't say it's really moving much. Maybe not at all. It's, the levels are generally stable. One of the things we have to do statistically, every, every six months, each time we go out and sample, we have to statistically evaluate your data. One of the things we have to do is run a trend analysis on that data, to see what's the appropriate statistical method that can be used. Well, I'm, I think, of the 12 or so issues that you have that are driving us further into the regulations, I believe 11 of those all have a declining trend. So, things, things are getting better. Some of that has to do with the fact that the old sampling methodologies for metals had sediment, more sediment in them biased the concentrations high. We've implemented a better sampling methodology, so the metals concentrations are lower. So, some of the declining concentrations are a result of simply a change in the sampling process, but some of this is, in fact, getting better.
How do you remediate for cobalt? Simple filtration of some kind, or what?
Well, this is where we get to the Mother Nature side of things. We don't want to try to get into cleaning up groundwater. Cobalt is probably there, well, first of all, the cobalt, I can fairly confidently say the cobalt did not come out of the landfill. Cobalt's in the soil naturally. What probably happens with the cobalt is when organics, say landfill gas or leachate, migrate out of the landfill, they, that provides a food source for the bacteria. The bacteria eat that. They change the conditions of the subsurface, and as a result, some things that are naturally there, but they're bound in the soil, become more soluble. And so, what you would have to have happen likely is the, over time, when the organics aren't migrating out into the, into the subsurface any longer, that subsurface will return back to the conditions that it was before, and the cobalt will go away. If the cobalt tried to migrate into a unimpacted area, then it would probably fall back out of solution and be in, just in the soil again. So, and the other thing with comment on cleaning up groundwater, you're required to sample for, I think it's about 213 different constituents. So, let's just take, for example, benzene and vinyl chloride. Benzene degrades aerobically. Vinyl chloride will degrade anaerobically. So, if I create an environment where vinyl chloride will, will go away, benzene won't. Also, for some of these things to go away, I have to lower, it's called the redox, but I have to, I have to change the subsurface condition so that one contaminant will go away. But, a lot of these metals are redox sensitive. So, if I change the redox from an oxidizing environment to an anaerobic environment, they'll change their valence state and go from an insoluble form to a soluble form. So, you can solve one problem, create another problem, when you're dealing with 213 different constituents. The best thing is, is if nature will address it all for you, and you assist her by doing some form of source control. That was a long answer to your question.
Thank you.
But you said sometimes nature helps more than other times, and it's for a lot of different reasons, then, huh?
Yeah, and they, I mean, nature is always helping, generally. The thing is, is that she can do so much, and if more is being poured out than what she can handle, the plume gets bigger. When what's being poured out becomes less, and she can take care of it, then the plumes start to shrink. Your plumes appear to be shrinking, but you do have the clear indications of a source problem, and I think you'll end up having to do something. Unless we really see a change in the interpretation of the regulations, and you're, you're able to leave what you have.
Was that change in the regulations, a DNR change, or an EPA change?
A change in what we have right now.
Said your sampling techniques have to change, and it's lowered the bar.
That was a DNR requirement. You might be able to interpret that that could have come out of the EPA years and years ago, but basically, it stems from a network that can monitor the quality of the groundwater. So, if there's too much dirt in the sample, then you're not, your network's not monitoring the quality of the groundwater. It's monitoring, monitoring the quality of the groundwater with a bunch of interferes. So, the requirement was to get all of that out. So, that came out probably three or so years ago. As far as the cleanup side of things is concerned, it may be interesting to note that the DNR left out a section of the federal rule when they wrote 113, that's, that's the chapter you're under, back in 2007. That section that was left out is a risk-based section. So, there's been some talk of whether or not that shouldn't be brought back. Maybe this stuff should be looked at from a risk standpoint. If it doesn't pose a risk to anyone, should we really be spending a lot of money dealing with it? And 113 is supposed to be revisited here in the next couple of years. So, there'll be opportunity to comment, and maybe that language will be brought, brought back in, and we'll see what, what happens.
If we have to establish one or maybe even more background wells, will the DNR acknowledge that and give us time to do that?
I think they will, and that's what I'm going to approach them with in the next week. And I'll lay out the explanation of what we're, why we're doing what we're doing, and what we hope to accomplish, and the time that we need.
I would assume they would recognize the time involved in establishing a new background. Give us that time.
Historically, they have. And in fact, the item 12 of your consent order basically says that, I mean, when we, we started on this journey two years ago, knowing that we were going to put in wells, sample them, we wouldn't know what we would find, which may necessitate doing something else, and none of that could, not all of that could be projected. So, if things evolved that would require more time, the DNR wouldn't, wouldn't unnecessarily deny extensions. So, I'm fairly confident we can get it, but I will ask first, and then, formally put the request together once we kind of know what we're going to get. Okay, what's going to happen in 2017? This is notwithstanding an extension. This is just following the extent order, the consent order as it is. We'll continue to do some groundwater sampling analysis to aid in plume bracketing. One of the things that DNR put on the list of items to talk about and with a, in a roundtable-type discussion is whether or not we could use geochemical fingerprints to show that we're in clean groundwater. So, that, what that would mean is I put a well in to bracket my plume, and my metals concentration is still higher than the background. So, based on the metal, I'm not bracketed. But if my geochemical signature says this is clean water, then they may, they want to discuss whether or not they should be open to accepting that as, yeah, the plume's bracketed. Even though I didn't meet the concentration I needed to, the plume's still bracketed. So, that may be an angle also that we could pursue, but I think the first thing would be, let's get more background. And if we need to build that kind of a case as well. So, we won't, we won't put all our eggs in one basket, but we'll keep, keep several things moving. We have, our plumes aren't bracketed, so we'll have to bracket, install additional monitoring wells to bracket the plumes, and then, as it stands now, complete an assessment of corrective measures by December 1. Okay, now, we'll switch gears and talk very briefly about the master plan. What this is, is the design and permitting of phases five and six. Those are the last two cells currently planned at the landfill. Gives you an estimated 17 years of life. That depends upon your, the rate at what you're putting waste in there, and how much you're packing into each cubic yard of space. If you get more waste, obviously, the life will be less. If you get a higher density and can pack more waste into the same space, it'll last longer. If you don't get as good a density, it won't last as long. But that's, a current projection is about 17 years. There'll be a lagoon constructed on the southwest side of the landfill. That'll be to provide additional storage beyond what you have with your two underground storage tanks. And the DNR has tentatively, tentatively approved the master plan as of January 31st. It's going out for public comment, and once that's done, notwithstanding any issue that comes up there, you'll have a permitted design. And then, the collaboration review, that is well underway, as far as building the model, financial model. Just a couple of things to note, it's, Muscatine and Scott County are in the same planning area, just have separate service areas. The landfills for the two facilities are approximately 11 miles apart. What we're, what we're building is a financial model that will project the revenues and expenses through phase six of the Muscatine landfill. And then, we're incorporating flexibility into the model so that we can look at, well, what if you, what if you happen to close the landfill now? What happens if, it's, it'll be a very useful tool, more than just evaluating collaboration opportunities, but you can look at, what if my waste stream goes down? What does that do to my revenue and expenses? What if it goes up? What if I, what happens if the hauling contract doesn't come back, it comes back at a higher rate? Or the landfill contract comes back higher? Or inflation does something different? You'll be able to lot, look at a lot of different aspects and scenarios, looking forward out 17 years to see what, what the future holds, what you might have to do with tipping fees, what your opportunities are. So, it's a model that will allow a review of collaboration between the two facilities, whatever form that might take, if any. And also, it'll be a very useful tool for you going forward to project out, when you're going to have large expenses, what things could either positively or negatively affect your financial projection, and what you might be able to do about it. And that is the conclusion. You have any questions?
That'll be, tentatively be scheduled for probably back to council around March.
So, after five and six is built and approved, the 17 years, there's no more? There's no seven, eight that could be built?
Do you have any questions?
That'll be, tend to be scheduled for probably back to council around March.
So after five and six is built and approved, seventeen years, there's no more? There's no seven, eight that could be built?
Well, what there, uh, one of the things that we're doing, uh, with this, uh, finance, with this collaboration project is a very rough look at, uh, how much capacity might be s- still available at the Muscatine County landfill. And there's a, we've roughed out some base grades and final grades and there's a substantial amount of space that it could still be potentially permitted at the landfill. Decades worth of space. The space starts to become less advantageous, uh, meaning uh, you have to build a larger footprint to get the same, the same volume. Your five and six space, you build a fairly small footprint and you get to put a lot of waste over it. Because the shape of your landfill is kind of right now a horseshoe where you're filling.
Uh huh.
And five and six sit on one of the legs of the horseshoe. So when you build that side, you fill everything up, including over other cells. Which gives you a lot of space for that footprint.
Okay.
After that, you, there's space that you could permit to the north and you would come over some of this, you have, uh, quick description of the landfill is, it was, as you probably know, it was a ravine fill back when it was started. Seven ravines were filled, it was kind of a, a hill here and all the ravines coming out of it were filled up. And then I think what you did was kind of dug out the top of the hill and you put in cells there. The cells on the top are all what's called subtitle D cells. Subtitle D is the federal regulation reference that requires a certain type of construction. You can only place waste over a subtitle D cell. So when you go to the north, part of what you would build can piggyback up over your subtitle D cells. But to get a lot of space, you've got to build out a quite a large area and you'll be piggybacking over parts of your ravines that are not subtitle D. So there's waste there, but you can't just put waste on top of it. You have to build a liner and make it a, a whole new cell. Now, that, uh, that, if you were to do that, that's a long ways out.
It, it is and I, I'm just, I just wanted to know if, I mean, does that mean that seventeen years from now, we're, we're looking at a different location or something else? I don't know.
No, I think if, if you were still gonna be a landfill in seventeen years, uh, there's space to be had out there.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bilo.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Last thing on tonight's agenda is the presentation and selection of the addendum to the Mississippi Drive corridor project. Jim and Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Seems like just a week ago, we were speaking on the same subject and we've done some work and there are some, three pieces of paper, eleven by seventeen, in front of you that outline those three options that we discussed a week ago. I thought I would just take just a second before I turn this over to, uh, Mr. Harbaugh to just do a little bit of the big picture stuff and just kind of frame this. So in the design, as it sits, comparative to the first option you have there, the, what's in the design is a narrower median, slightly narrower median, um, two lanes of traffic in each direction and some on-street parallel parking along the, uh, bluff side or the north side of the river in this area that we're talking about. Um, since the last meeting, I, I have discussed this project with everybody that lives in that section except for the very first house next to Broadway and that individual's last name is Gray and I just couldn't hunt up a phone number that worked for him. I got a couple of them digging, but they didn't work. So I have not talked to that individual, but I've talked to everybody else that's on that. Um, I, I, I do need to tell you what I learned from those discussions. Um, the farthest down river, the two houses, um, belonged to people with the last name of Lewis and they felt that maybe the best solution to this was a rollover curb median so that they could have full access to their driveways. Um, and they did express that they really weren't in love with or needed to have on-street parking. So that's, takes care of the two on the downstream end and the one that's on the farthest upstream end I haven't talked to. Now, everybody else that's in between there, which I believe is five, no, five, six, four, five other houses, I believe.
Four, five.
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 Oh, yeah, well, we can count.
Well, we don't need to get hung up on that number, how many of them there are?
Five.
Um, I visited with them and as a general consensus, um, they feel that, uh, on-street parking is important and they also feel strongly that they do not want to be restricted to, uh, right in, right out driveways. Um, if I had to summarize, and they are all sitting right over here, so hopefully they correct me if I'm wrong. Um, if I had to summarize their feeling on this, it is that they really see, see no reason to change the project whatsoever in that area. They, they, they feel that it is good. So I, I wanted to say that, uh, so I could tell you what I had learned in the, in those meetings. And now we're gonna get into a little bit of detail on each one of those options and kind of what the differential costs are. At that point in time, I'm gonna step aside and let Mr. Harbaugh handle this.
Does he mean that these houses think this option is okay?
No.
I think so.
I don't think so.
Originally planned.
They want, they, as close to that one.
That one, okay.
With parking, there's no parking on any of those.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so in, uh, last week's council meeting, we talked about the potential for changes and, uh, looking at three different options to, to adjust what we have in the plans currently for Mississippi Drive. Uh, one of the driving forces behind these changes and is the, the sidewalk condition and slopes that are out there currently. And that's one of the reasons that we had a fairly narrow median through this area in our plans of about nine feet. Um, and that was to accommodate the parking, but also to accommodate the proposed sidewalks out there to meet ADA requirements. At last week's meeting, we talked about how we can make this a little safer for on-traffic, uh, cars and looked at three different options. The first is to, uh, take away that on-street parking and make a wider median similar to what we would have in the downtown area that would accommodate having a car that could wait to do the left turn on the, uh, in the area that the two, uh, the U-turn area with the red paving on, on the graphic there. Uh, this median would be a roughly a fifteen-foot wide, sixteen-foot wide median. It would accommodate a car waiting in between the two lanes of traffic to be able to make that left turn or U-turn there, uh, to support a little safer turning movement. However, it would eliminate all the on-street parking as part of that. Option two that we talked about is the discussion point of having a rollover curb and a wider median. So that residents could, if they so choose, go over the curb on the median and access their driveways. Uh, but also to, to have that U-turn area as well that would not be a rollover curb through this area. This would be all paving through the area. It also moves the lighting from the center of the roadway to the outside edge of the roadway. And, uh, we have to put in a few extra lights because of that, because of the, sir.
How high is this drive over?
Uh, we would typically put about a four-inch cur- rollover curb, a valley curb, so it wouldn't be a
So it just slopes up and then be flat across the top?
Correct, yep.
I, I thought you said six inch originally.
Uh, the median, the standard median that we're putting in are a six-inch high curb and not a rollover curb.
Rollover is four inch.
But if we were to go to a rollover curb, then it would be a four inch.
Okay.
Jim, how wide is that median?
In this depiction, it's the same width as the, it's, it's the fifteen to sixteen feet, depending on where you measure. Uh, and then the third option that we looked at was to have no median, but just striping in the area, which is depicted in this graphic here. It would have a, a center lane throughout a portion of the area here and it also would have, here again, we'd use the lighting from the center to the outboard edge of things. Here again, no, no on-street parking with this one, uh, but a center turn lane.
So how wide is, how wide are the three lanes?
Three lane, the travel lanes, I believe, are twelve foot wide.
Okay.
And it would be roughly a fifteen-foot center median or center, uh, stripe out area.
Okay.
Then the next thing we did, we, we, uh, wanted to compare some costs between the concepts here. If I get to the right one here. So we took our baseline of the proposed design that you saw last week and looked at the different options and, and how that would impact things. Option one with the landscape median and making it wider adds about twenty-five thousand to the, the overall project with additional paving, addition, decorative paving, additional, uh, landscaping through that area to accommodate that. Option two, which is the, the concrete median, the rollover, adds between forty and fifty thousand dollars to that, which surprised me a little bit when we first looked at it, but, uh, one of the big costs on that is doubling up of the lighting and the, the extra cost associated with that. Option three, which is the, the striping out of the center, reduces the overall cost by about twenty thousand dollars from that baseline of our proposed design.
But it adds the additional lighting?
It does add the additional lighting, but we take away the cost of, of paving the, the median. In all three of these options, we're still looking at doing the, the sidewalk, uh, alleviating, taking away any of that, that, uh, on-street parking to make that happen.
So why do we have to have a sidewalk there?
Currently, there's a sidewalk there.
Okay.
And, uh, it does not meet code and as, as part of, uh, roadway reconstruction, if we're doing work in that area, we do need to bring things up to code. And we looked at it several different ways.
Even if it doesn't go nowhere?
It goes
It goes to housing.
It goes from Broadway back the other way, so you can pick up the trail.
But if you're going from, if you were, if you're walking from Guy and Grill and I'm moving over to Broadway, I absolutely have to go, it goes nowhere. I have to go uphill or I have to cross the street.
It, it serves the housing there?
Yeah, I mean, so it, it serves that housing there.
Correct.
So if I were to potentially not include that, the homeowners could still get their, their on-street parking. And if you upgrade, do we have to have, if we give that, and I don't even know if we could, but if we were to give that section of land to the homeowners, then they manage it and we don't have to even have a sidewalk there. Could we? Would that still meet the code?
That's a potential option. Now, we are putting people into the roadway to, to access, um, the parking stalls. That, that would be the, the drawback.
Me, say that again?
Instead of having pedestrian access, say I parked two houses down from, um, from the, from the house I'm going to, the only accessible route would be in the roadway.
So if Mr. Gray, who we haven't been able to get a hold of, wanted to park on Mississippi Drive, there's no way for him to get to unless he walks to the parking area, on-street parking without walking in the street?
Walking in the street.
Or across grass?
Across the yard.
Or, yeah. There is, there, there is a, there is a fourth option. Um, in my opinion, um, the, the street work caused by the sewer work we did started basically at Broadway with new concrete all the way out and at this point in time, it goes clear out to, to Hauser Street. I mean, Hershey Avenue and complete. What if we, the addendum would be pulling this section from Broadway on out, out of phase one and including it in what I would call phase two, which would include Carver Corner when we decide about that. And then from the bluff, which you really can't do a whole lot with because it's kind of on the road, uh, the, that entire section then is discussed at a later time. We have more time than just tonight to, to put all this together and hash it.
All we're doing is kicking the can down the road. We're gonna have the same conversation two years from now.
I know. I know. But we have more time to look at it.
And not be pressed.
And not be pressed to buy, you know, we gotta get this done.
And I think it's important, Alan and I were talking before the meeting here about how Carver Corner and this section of roadway, you really start to think about it as a system instead of two independent elements. And, um, the impact to the, to the residents is by putting a median in through this area would be greatly lessened depending on what type of intersection that you look at, at Carver Corner. Um, you know, if it's a roundabout, it's much easier to make that loop back around. If it's not a roundabout, it, it's a little bit harder to, to make, you know, you'd have to cut through it.
Like, I can, I can tell you that, that, uh, I personally, probably people thought I was nuts. I did about four U-turns down there in that section and I was tight against the curb near the railroad in front of their house, McCullough's house, or the McCullough's is plural. And in order to make a U-turn, I was, took all three lanes and I was in the parking. So coming down and making a nice little U-turn to take off, I could do it probably in one of my other vehicles, but not the one I was driving. And it was just, it's just a full-size van. But turning radius stinks, so then you turn partway, stop, back up and then take off again and that's even more hazardous when you got somebody coming from downtown, so.
I'll kind of echo what Phil just mentioned, 'cause I had the conversation with Jim before the meeting also that what we're not discussing right now is from Ash Street toward the Carver Corner, they are planning to put in a narrow, but a curbed median. And since we don't know yet what we're gonna do with Carver Corner, to me, it seems like the smarter thing to do is, what Phil mentioned, is stop the current project at Broadway so we don't, 'cause this is all brand-new concrete, three lanes. So we, we don't do something now that when we get back to Carver Corner, we will regret having done or spent the money to do. Particularly if, no matter what we do here, there's gonna be a curb going from Ash Street just short of Guy and Grill. We may not want that in there in the future either, so, uh, I know what Tom said, we're just kicking the can down, but we got, if we kick the can down the street, we have more time to think about where we're gonna kick it the next time.
Yeah.
And more information to base your decision.
And more information and
Another option is to stop at Ash Street.
Well, that is
Do that too. If you're, if you're worried about that particular issue and that, that curbing, you stop at Ash Street and we call that part of the Carver Corner development.
We could do that, but I'd just soon stop at Broadway so we don't screw up the brand-new paving we have in there right now.
How, how brand-new is that? 'Cause I don't
Six years.
Six years old.
Ten years old.
That's new.
I mean, for all practical purposes, it's pretty new.
Yes.
And, and I got a, and I, I asked our dear engineer today, um, he didn't like giving me the information. I just asked, what's the cost of concrete, three-lane road construction, uh, per foot, per mile, per, per whatever?
Uh huh.
And, and then I went on Magic and I measured out the section from, uh, Broadway to Elm, which is part of the project, and it's about twelve hundred feet. And based on his number per foot, we have one point two million dollars of new roadway through there. Now, that buried be depending on, it was part of the CS Now, that buried, depending on, it was part of the CSO project, that, you know, you're taking it out. But in essence, that entire section, can be attested by John, was all-new.
So...
Put up with it for nine months.
Jim, having, having heard that, with your estimated cost with the, with the new lighting in option three, where we put lights on the outside, could that still be done with directional boring without having to do, tear into the concrete?
Regardless of us doing any roadway work out here, there will be electrical work being done.
Directional boring, you could run, you'd run electrical underneath that?
Correct. And that's most of the work that, because the pavement is new out there, we don't want to rip up really anything that we really absolutely have to. So the intent has been all along to do boring.
Okay.
If we are crossing the roadway.
Since last week's meeting, I've been down to that area a couple times, and I can see now where that on-street parking is, it's more than just standard on-street parking to some of the residents down there. So I'd be okay with what they're suggesting or, because I don't know if we're in a position to make, you told me before the meeting, we could narrow the median, but then, I'm not sure. I don't think any of us are going to have time to really...
Yeah, I'm having, I've said last meeting that we really could just eliminate on-street parking down there because they all have, we looked at the pretty picture and we said all of them have parking. Well, they don't.
They do, but they don't.
They do, but they don't. And I, I still, I, and I fight for this as much as I can, but I'm really not in favor of limiting access to somebody's, that they have of their own property. And when we put a median strip in, we do these, we're limiting access to their property that they've enjoyed. These people have put a lot of money in these homes. They've, they've, I've watched the, I'll call them the twins, because I had them in school, and I've seen what they've done with their properties. And it's, and it's amazing. They, the value has gone up considerably. They're not an eyesore on the, on the riverfront, so to speak. And the rest of them are the same way.
I have a question. When we laid this new pavement 10 years ago?
Six years.
Six years ago? What, how did we get past the ADA issue in the sidewalks? How did that happen?
CSO? I don't know.
We just ignored the code?
I don't know. I really don't know.
I, that's why I'm dumbfounded. I don't understand how you can do nothing here. But I...
Jim, there, there's also another issue that was brought to me this week. When you're, have a vehicle going down Broadway Street and you're going to turn left, your nose of your vehicle is going to be out front and you're going to cause a safety hazard, an accident of some sort.
Potential.
Unless you really hit that gas pedal so fast that you're going to lose control of it.
You're talking about right here?
If you want to turn east off of Broadway, turning east down the...
That's right. Those trees are in an area that obstruct vision tremendously.
Isn't that the case today?
As of this moment, correct, which should be corrected.
But it can't, there's not much that can be corrected when the bluff...
You've got the bluff right there. I don't know. I mean, it could turn more trees.
Put that on somebody's agenda to figure it out, but it needs to be corrected.
Jim?
Scott made a suggestion, and I'm not sure if I understood it, but did you say by narrowing, on page three, by narrowing the center turn lane, there would be room for on-street parking? Potentially?
He just, he just said that's the only way you could bring the on-street parking back in. It wouldn't be wide, it, the median then would not be wide enough to protect a car trying to turn left.
Right.
So there's not enough total right-of-way there to work with.
Kind of full circle back to the, what we have in the plans right now.
Yeah.
With the narrower, with parking, but doesn't protect the car from fully pulling out of the intersection. Now, I guess I want to expand upon that a little bit. One of the things that we looked at during this design process was the total number of cars that are using that roadway during the, during an average day, we call it ADT. There's about 8,000 cars, and if that's a balance, going both directions, that's about 4,000 cars in each direction a day. Sounds like a big number, but it, quite honestly, it isn't a real big number for car traffic. Now, if you look at the, the number of houses here and you figure out the number of trips that a person might take, the seven houses you're at, you know, if we're looking at five trips a day, you're at 35 cars. So you do the math and we're at less than half of 1% of overall traffic through there that might slow people down, or you might have to wait for somebody to turn. I don't want to say that's an insignificant amount, but it's sure pretty darn low compared to the overall volumes of traffic and the, the amount or, or impact of slowing traffic down by having to wait for that left turn or U-turn around. That's why we came to the decision that we had in, in the layout that we have done, balancing all the, the greater good of traffic, balancing the safety of everybody, and balancing the needs of the residents out there with existing parking on the streets. One of the other nice things about the existing parking right now is it does provide a little bit of a buffer for the residents out there if they're backing out of their driveway. Instead of backing right into a travel lane, you have that backing into kind of a no-ends land, a neutral zone before you go in there.
Plus, if they're coming from downtown, heading west, and want to turn into their residence, it provides them kind of a, kind of an offlane there to...
Yep. If there's no cars parked there, there is an offlane to get around, a little bit of running around as well.
And one problem I see with doing this stretch with the median where they have to turn right out of the drives, they can't go uptown, they have to go down toward Carver's Corner.
Or for the night.
Where do they make the U-turn to go back downtown? Because you can't do it at the existing Carver Corner.
Roundabout.
No, there's no roundabout there. So that's an issue. But I, I did ask Jim before the meeting, I said, if we don't do this, we stop at Broadway and don't do the rest of it, what will be the future cost of adding this in? And he said, there won't be any, if we take the cost that they save today by not doing it, that's what it'll, except for inflation, that's what it'll cost to do it later. So in other words, by delaying it, we're not multiplying the cost factor over what it is today.
Because you don't have to re-bury any other utilities or anything?
Correct. And I guess preface that if it were part of a larger project and, you know, if we, if you're looking at the, the next phases of Grandview and Carver Corner, to put it in a project of that scale, there's not a lot of extra expense. If we're, if you were to do it as a standalone, small project, it certainly would cost you more.
It'd be the mobilization and everything.
Okay. I'm going to go out on a limb here. I want to move that we pull this section of Mississippi Drive out of Phase One and put it in the Phase Two project, which would include Carver, I'm calling Phase Two as Carver Corner.
You're going to start at Broadway?
Yes.
Pull it out.
Starting at Broadway.
I'll second that. I'll second.
Can I, just a real quick clarification on that?
Yeah.
We still would be doing electrical work through that area. It would be off-pavement because we do have to make connections for lighting and communications.
So that way they don't have to do it again.
Yeah, that'd be, I don't have a problem with that. I just, yeah.
So we have a motion in a second. I wondered if anybody in the audience that was affected by this wanted to say anything before they take the vote. Any other discussion?
Ma'am, would you come up so we can hear you? We can hear you, but the folks at home can't.
You need to give your name and address.
Name and address.
Well, we have no way to park when there's snow and ice. My driveway is too steep. The twins both would have a problem. We can't have company. I'm a landlord. I wouldn't be able to have tenants come by and pay rent. I, I'd have to move, basically. So we're real happy. And our cement's good down there. And we know the telephone poles and everything going down, and they toss that, so...
So the, could you state your name and address, please?
Charlotte Lewan, 717 West Mississippi Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion that they're talking about, ma'am, ma'am, the motion that he just made was to put off making the decision on this part until later down the road when they work on Carver Corner. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does. We're all just really worried about the parking.
Certainly.
I mean, one way wouldn't affect us as much as that parking.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. So you mentioned the ADA parking that was part of the code, correct, Jim? Hypothetically, moving on from Broadway going downtown, how are you going to address that? There's no sidewalk.
Yeah.
So when we get to a point where we're wanting to go from Broadway down to Contraire and to all the downtown areas, there's no sidewalk?
There's no existing.
There's no existing. Well, I don't really consider what's in there now an existing. It's parking.
Well, what, can I say something? When, in doing the riverfront plan and trying to address people getting downtown, we took out the high sidewalk, is what I always referred to as a high sidewalk. And after transversing that once with my kids, it's as scary as hell. That's why we put the connection to the trail that crosses the railroad tracks.
Yeah, which is, which is obviously what we're encouraging, in my opinion.
And it's down to one end, but yeah.
But that's why I don't feel like anything between Ash and Broadway should be a sidewalk. I mean, all that picture with the grass and everything, give it to the homeowners.
But it does give them access, though, since there's already sidewalk there. If you change, I think if you change the roadway much, then you're going to be somewhat forced to meet ADA.
Be required to.
If there's an existing sidewalk, which there is. If there wasn't a sidewalk and you did a minimal amount of work, I think you could avoid ADA requirements.
The requirement, correct me if I'm wrong, but the requirement is not to put in sidewalk. The requirement is that if you have sidewalk, to make it ADA compliant. So make, make sure that the slopes are ADA compliant, make sure that you have those panels that are in place, and those types of improvements. Not that you have to add a sidewalk in that bluff area. Really don't want to disturb that bluff area.
No, neither do I.
But you do want to get folks from point A to point B, and we're trying to encourage folks not to walk in the street, to walk in the sidewalk and be able to have access to the trail.
I just feel like we're encouraging if we were to move that from point A, Ash, to Broadway, there's absolutely, it goes to nowhere. We're encouraging if people were to travel that way...
It goes to the houses.
It goes to the houses.
And to the trail.
Okay. But if, but if we have a nice ADA sidewalk and it's, and it's handicapped accessible, where's the handicapped individual going to be able to go if he's going downtown?
He has to go to the trail.
To the trail.
The trail would be the accessible route.
There's no access from Broadway to the trail.
Unless he's got a motorized wheelchair and he can go up Broadway.
Right. And then, you know, six years ago, this was not a city street. So I, this was a DOT-owned street six years ago. This is, was not a...
Well, that's how they got out of it.
This was not a city-owned street. So I, I don't know the details, but it, just, just a reminder that it was not a city street at that point in time.
That's true. I forgot about that.
That's probably what it was, because I was like...
But the motion on the table is to put off...
Well, no, no, Mississippi Drive.
I know, I know. I just want, yeah, I just want to know before we move forward on it.
Any other discussion on Phil's motion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And you are going to do the electrical work.
Six ayes and one nay. Putting off, and then adding it to the Phase Two of what Carver Corner. Thank you, Jim. We appreciate it.
Jim, before you leave, so you said you're still going to put lighting up? Are you still going to run electrical?
That's debatable through this section. We would certainly do from Broadway upstream, new lighting. If we're not changing the roadway at all and we're not changing any of the location of the poles for this phase, I would not anticipate brand-new lighting going in from Broadway to Carver Corner. However, there is electrical that needs to be put through there to feed some of the other elements throughout the project, as well as fiber optic and communications as part of the project.
Buried stuff that's going to be common to the whole thing.
Yep.
But when they put it in, when they put the electrical in on Mulberry, Power and Water came along and they put junction boxes in the ground every so often. Then later, you, I mean, it was, it was a month or better, and then they came in and set the pole and run conduit over to it.
Yep. And that, that's very similar to what we're doing here. We're putting all the conduit in and all the foundations as part of the roadway project. Muscatine Power and Water will be installing the actual lights.
Right.
Source through that.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll be right if you have any other questions. Thank you.
We appreciate your patience.
Yeah. I, I really appreciate your patience.
Well, it's a, it's a difficult and a lot of, like I was telling him earlier, there's a lot of balls in the air being juggled on just this one area. And changing one thing has an impact on it, so...
Exactly.
I know our action last week about bringing this back up this week, you know, put quite a burden on the design team. And I appreciate what they did do because a week to come up with this stuff is, you know, that's a short period of time.
Thank God for AutoCAD, huh?
Down to the comments, part of our, as we close our meeting out for the night. Councilman Raywall, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Not tonight, thank you.
Councilman Spread?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Councilman Harvey?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Natvig?
Just thanks to Nancy, Greg, staff, and everybody that helped with the budget preparation. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Biden?
No comments tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Sasego?
Again, to echo Natvig, Scott's comments, the budget was very good. We had an extremely challenging information that every department had to bring in. I want to thank you, all the departments that came in and gave us an extremely good budget and went very smooth. And I continue to, to learn as a council member. Thank you.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
And I just have a couple things. I'd like to remind everyone that our next coffee with the mayor is September 25th at 9:00 a.m. at Happy Joe's. Love to have all of you come. And lastly, I'm sorry, staff, did you have anything tonight?
Matthew, yes, Your Honor.
I'm sorry. Lastly, I would just like to remind everyone that our local food pantry, the Muscatine Food Pantry located in the old post office, is in serious need of food and non-food items. If any of you have the ability to drop off items during business hours, it would be greatly appreciated and/or mail a check. Thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
So be it.